Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 12th Regular Meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Emergency evacuation exits are on the back on either side and up front on other side. Mr. Gavin, we have some, any correspondence that can be posted has been posted. Before I turn it over to Mr. Gavin, are there any students here this evening that would like to address the board? We have a lot of you here tonight. Okay, Mr. Gavin, we will get to the reason why our students are here if you want to introduce them.
Sure. We are thrilled to be joined here today by the cast of the Southside Middle School Show. The show is the thing. So they will be performing for us today. We are super excited. They not only were, even though it's been a few weeks since they've done the, done the show, they had to refresh themselves on the song. It's been, it's been like a few weeks. But they also reminded me to tell them that we should be thanking them because they are tonight's entertainment. So we need to make sure we do that. And they told me that they were looking for a proper rate of compensation as well. So we are super excited today. So we will turn it over to our middle school performers who are right behind us at an awkward angle.
Turn it off when you're done.
Oh, it's on.
I'm not a stranger to the dark. Hide away, they say, 'cause we don't want your broken parts. I've learned to be ashamed of all my scars. Run away, they say, no one will love you as you are. But I won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us, for we are glorious. Please welcome to the stage: Viola Allison, Lana Juette, Maeve Naraki, Tessa Grande, Samaria Chiran, Amaya Kirko, Kate Palia, and Hannah Riley. All right, the following athletes also earned Nassau County honors. All-county award recipients: Viola Allison, Lana Juette, Maeve Naraki, and Tessa Grande. All-conference recipients: Kate Palia, Samaria Chiran, and Amaya Kirko. Congratulations, girls. Congratulations, girls varsity cross-country team. Don't leave yet, we need to take your picture. One more time, congratulations, girls cross-country. All right, next up, we're gonna honor our boys varsity golf team. The Southside Boys Varsity Golf Team had a remarkable season, finishing with an impressive 11-1 record. A highlight of their season was breaking Garden City's 60-match win streak. This outstanding performance earned them the conference championship title for the first time since 2016. As the team transitions to the postseason in the spring, we eagerly anticipate their continued success and look forward to cheering them on. Please welcome: Ryan Bernabeu, Scott Bernabeu, Liam Conlin, Daniel Deitch, Gavin Doniu, James Gilbert, Luca Iacabellus, Nicholas Johnson, Colin Lynch, Matthew Regan, Lachlan Tarpe, and Peter Tumanello. All right, the following athletes earned Nassau County honors. All-county award recipients: Danny Deitch, Scott Bernabeu, and Ryan Bernabeu. All-county Honorable Mention recipient: James Gilbert. Boys, congratulations, or let's give it up one more time for the boys varsity golf team. All right, next up, girls varsity soccer. Girls varsity soccer team had a remarkable season, finishing with a record of 9-4-2 against tough competition. Their victories over Meppam and MacArthur propelled them to the Nassau County Championship game against Garden City, narrowly missing out on the title. Finishing as the Class AA Nassau County runner-up, we are incredibly proud of their hard work and dedication throughout the season. Please welcome: Brooke Giblin, Anna King, Sienna Connolly, Sophia Anna Sensel, Bobby Creo, Julie Feranda, Taylor Hansman, Molly Barry, Jules Roberts, Katore Martin, Brooke Duresti, Maeve Martin, Sophia Corvetti, Lindsay Marderana, Katie Colick, Sarah Schaefer, Natalie Camilleri, Ella Feranda, Feranda, Molly Reardon, Olivia Caracholo, Molly Batkin, Viv Haley, Mae Fiona, Aleah Cattigan, Summer Stack, Maddie Wu, Charlotte Rathgen, Abby Gruner, and Cassie Morris. All right, the following athletes earned various Nassau County and/or New York State honors. Sienna Connolly was All-State Second Team and All-County. Viv Haley, All-State Third Team and All-County. Brooke Duresti, All-County. Sarah Schaefer, All-County Honorable Mention. Taylor Hansman, All-County Honorable Mention. Jules Roberts, All-County Honorable Mention. Lindsay Marderana, All-Conference. Sophia Anna Sensel, All-Conference. And Charlotte Rathgen, Senior Scholar-Athlete. Congratulations to our girls varsity soccer team. All right, next up, girls varsity volleyball. Girls varsity volleyball team had an exceptional season, finishing with a remarkable 16-2 record. They clinched the Conference One Championship and went on to capture the Nassau County Championship Title. Their impressive playoff run, including thrilling victories over Elmont, Seaford, and Wantagh, ultimately leading them to the Long Island Championship Final. We are incredibly proud of their achievements and the recognition they have earned for the team. Please welcome: Amy Baron-Broick, Ryan Aiello, Maeve Britt, Allison Kanner, Julia Coles, Katherine Camilleri, Molly Cosgrove, Ally Finkleton, Mia Kelly, Abigail Magnus, Keely McCormick, Annie Kelichan, Kira Mulaney, Grace Lamott, Sidney Marshall, Lena Miller, and Tess Raikman. The following athletes earned various Nassau County, Long Island, and/or New York State honors. Abigail Magnus, Third Team All-State, First Team All-Long Island, All-County, Nassau MVP of the Class A Playoffs. Kaye Camilleri, Third Team All-State, Second Team All-Long Island, All-County, Nassau All-Tournament Selection for the Class A Playoffs. Amy Baron-Broick, All-County, Nassau All-Tournament Selection for the Class A Playoffs. Kira Mulaney, All-County. Mia Kelly, All-County Honorable Mention. Maeve Britt, All-County Honorable Mention. Ally Finkleton, All-County Honorable Mention. Keely McCormick, Senior Scholar-Athlete, and Coach Steve Mariano, Nassau County Coach of the Year. One more. All right, we're gonna honor some of our other athletes who are All-County Honorable Mention and above. So, first up, boys varsity volleyball. Boys varsity volleyball had a wonderful season, going 12-5, making it to the quarterfinal round of the Class A Boys Volleyball Playoffs. The award winners for boys volleyball include: John Pericolosi was Conference Player of the Year and All-County, and Ryan Schmidt was All-County. Home opener for the boys basketball team tomorrow, all right, if you wanna stop on by. All right, varsity football. The varsity football team earned the seven seed in the playoffs, upsetting, excuse me, number-two seed, Elmont, 31-13, to move on to the Conference Three semifinal playoff round. The award winners for football include Justin Singh, as he was an All-County Award recipient, and A.J. Magarachi earned All-County Honorable Mention honors. Congratulations, Justin and A.J. Good job, guys. Next up, boys varsity soccer. The boys varsity soccer team had a successful regular season, going 12-4-1, making it to the Class AA Quarterfinal Round of the playoffs. The award winners for boys soccer include: All-County recipients TJ Brawl and Michael Benfonte, and Connor Fernandez, who earned All-County Honorable Mention. Congratulations TJ, Michael, and Connor. Thank you so much, Board. Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Thank you, everyone in the audience. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire, and congratulations to all of our fall athletes and their coaches. Thank you very much. Mr. Gavin, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Barry. A few updates. During the December 9th Meeting of the New York State Board of Regents, a motion was passed unanimously to amend the proposed addition of Part 124 and Subpart 124-2 to Subchapter E of the Regulations of the Commissioner relating to the Regionalization Plans. As you could see, that opening will clear a room. The amendment includes non-substantive changes to allow districts to engage in conversations with the aim of collaborating to create 37 region-led regionalization plans across the state every 10 years. The most important non-substantive change includes reiterating that participation in regionalization conversations is optional and creates a process by which districts can opt out of such conversations. At previous Board of Education meetings, we have provided updates to the community on the process of regionalization. New York State Department of Ed has now clearly stated that districts can opt out of the process. As of this point, our district has not submitted any information to inform the conversation on regionalization. The deadline to submit our data to the process is set for January 15th, but I believe we should have a conversation and set a path forward. One way to do that is for the Board to vote on a resolution approving the decision to opt out of the regionalization process and direct me to inform State Ed of such decision. Strategic planning update. During our last two meetings, the team has reviewed whether our current mission aligns with the values identified in last year's Community Value Survey. We have analyzed and discussed the existing mission statement and begun distinguishing the differences between a mission and a vision statement. At our December and January meetings, we aimed to finalize a range of mission and vision statement options for the Board to consider, including the possibility of retaining our current mission statement. This will enable the Board to review these options, provide guidance before we focus on specific aspects of the strategic plan this spring. Additionally, we will share the presentation on the Blue Ribbon Commission with the Planning Committee to ensure that our work aligns with potential changes to graduation and high school requirements. The Board of Education Retreat is scheduled for the end of January and will provide the opportunity for the Board to review the committee's progress and offer direction for the next phases of work. Starting in February, we anticipate increasing the meetings to two per month. One meeting will be the entire Strategic Planning Committee, and the others will be devoted to one of three priorities outlined, priorities as outlined by Board of Education Goals. Each subcommittee will be asked to devise specific outcomes and action steps with a three-year horizon in mind. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. On the first point as to regionalization, since we updated the public last time, as Mr. Gavin stated, now we have the option of opting out now that we've heard back from the state. I would like to read a resolution and then turn it over to the Board for consideration. Whereas at its December 2024 meeting, the Board of Regents adopted the regulations related to regionalization plans, Subpart 124-2, on a permanent basis, and whereas a new 124-2.8 was added, which provides in part that a school district may elect not to participate in the development of a regionalization plan. Now therefore, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that pursuant to Regulations of the Commissioner of Education 124-2.8, the district elects not to participate in the development of a regionalization plan, and be it further resolved that the Superintendent is directed to submit the attached letter to the state prior to the submission deadline of January 15th, 2025. So, up for consideration, I'll turn it over to the Board for discussion. This would, just to be clear, tell the state that we are not participating in the regionalization plan, we are opting out, and that we're directing Mr. Gavin to notify the state as such.
I agree, and as I said in our meeting on November 7th, our focus is the education of the students in our district. I see no benefit to the students in our district to participate in any regionalization plans, and I would make a motion to approve that resolution to opt out of the regionalization process.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gavin. You'll send that to the state tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. On the strategic planning update, thank you for updating the Board and the public in terms of your work so far. The Board looks forward to the retreat considering the work of the committee so far and setting the direction as you move forward for the rest of the year. Turning to items for information, Mr. Gavin, we have a presentation this evening, Blue Ribbon Recommendation Update.
That's correct, Madam President. I am joined here tonight by Ms. Kelly Ramsey, our Director of Guidance, and also Dr. Walsh, our high school principal, and we will be presenting just an overview of what the state Blue Ribbon Commission has put together in terms of recommendations. Now, before we get up and start the presentation, it's very important to note that at this point, these are only recommendations. There's been no vote to adopt these, but this is, these are some of the changes the state is proposing, so we wanted to outline them for the Board and just try to put a sense of where we are now in terms of Rockville Center's position in terms of those changes. So, we're gonna go up there now. Okay, so, to get started. Thank you. One of the things we wanted to talk about tonight was what exactly the Blue Ribbon Commission was. What exactly the purpose of the Blue Ribbon Commission was and who commissioned it. So, the New York State Board of Regents put together in 2019 a commission, a group of people to come together and look at what our current New York State requirements are for graduation. The goal, as outlined by the Board of Regents, was to develop recommendations that would come back to the Board of Regents in terms of how to ensure equity and excellence for all students centered around high school graduation requirements. The commission sought feedback from various groups of stakeholders such as parents, teachers, and administrators. They also sought the input of the SUNY system and higher education, the business community, and also had several rounds of stakeholder surveys with students as well. So, what do we know right now? On November 4th of this year, the New York State Department of Ed released a timeline and implementation plan based on the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission. There are four key transformations that were included in the proposal. Number one, adopting the portrait of a, New York State Portrait of a Graduate. Two, redefining credits in terms of proficiency. Three, sunsetting diploma assessment requirements. And four, moving to one diploma. What this approach outlined was a phased-in approach, a structured timeline consisting of a planning year with three distinct phases of implementation. It also included enhanced stakeholder engagement and opportunities for stakeholder feedback throughout the process, and focused on planning and professional development. The plan allows time for thorough planning and professional learning opportunities and clear communication among all participants. The committee has outlined a proposed timeline for implementation. These changes all have a variety of materials, resources, and efforts needed to make these changes. So, as you'll see in the presentation, the various changes have different timelines attached to them. So, generally speaking, the planning year is where we are now, fall 2024 through the summer of 2025. The committee recommends Phase One begin, they call it the installation phase, beginning next fall 2025, which will go through the summer 2027. Phase Two is the initial implementation, which is fall 2027, which goes through September, the summer of 2029. And finally, Phase Three, the full implementation and scaling up, would occur in the fall of 2029. So, as you can see, there's various timelines here, so what we've been doing is trying to parse through, what do we know now? What are some things that we can already begin to work on based on some of the structures we currently have in place so that we're ready for the changes as they come to us in gradual increments? The first transformation that Mr. Gavin outlined was the adoption of a Portrait of a Graduate, which basically means that New York State is looking to identify essential skills, knowledge, mindsets, attributes that they want all of the students who graduate from public schools in New York State to have for 21st-century life, college careers, and citizenry. So, if you look, the proposed Portrait of a Graduate has a couple of key components. One, critical thinking, an innovative problem solver, literate across the content areas, cultural competency, social-emotional competence, being an effective communicator, being a global citizen. So, this is, these are the skills that they've currently proposed that they look to finalize by summer 2025. If you note, and you know some of our previous presentations and information, we noticed that a lot of these traits that are identified in the Portrait of a Graduate, they observed are similar to the ones we have in the IB learner profile. So, when we start to look at what are the things we're already doing and have in place that we can use to build upon, we know we have a strong foundation here based on there's a lot of overlapping skills and traits that they are looking to see from their students. According to the proposed timeline, students entering Grade Nine in the 2029 school year and beyond will be expected to demonstrate proficiency in the high school learning standards and the components of the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. So, students will have to show proficiency in those particular areas and map them to those proficiencies so that they will be able to identify by the time they graduate they've met certain criteria as it relates to those skills. they've met certain criteria as it relates to those skills. The second transformation is the concept of redefining how students earn credit. So when we look through this in our research and preparation, we've identified this is the area where we still have a lot of questions. So currently, students earn credit through the completion of a unit of study, which is predominantly based on time, how much time they spend per week in a given subject area. So the department has proposed redefining credits to focus on student proficiency and expand the ways that they can demonstrate that proficiency outside of the normal seat time credit. So while specific details are forthcoming, the committee acknowledges they look to maintain all of the current options that students can use to earn credit while also adding new options, so additional opportunities and ways for students to show proficiency. So one of the questions the group, when we've looked at this, is, well, how does the state plan to determine what proficiency is, right? That's a really key question that we're wondering and hoping to get more clarification on so we can put this into play and see what it looks like for our students. So the department plans to provide additional guidance on redefining credits and learning experiences and what that looks like. Under their proposed timeline, this work would be completed by summer 2027.
Transformation number three is sunsetting diploma assessment requirements. With this proposed change, starting with the 2027-2028 school year, students would no longer need to pass specific Regents exams to earn their high school diploma. This reflects a shift in the vision for graduation requirements and allows for more flexible and inclusive ways for students to demonstrate their proficiency. With that, students will have multiple pathways to showcase their readiness for graduation, and this broadens the definition of success beyond standardized tests. With that being said, Regents exams aren't going away, they're just going to be used differently and won't be tied to graduation. So they'll still remain a valuable tool for students to demonstrate mastery of learning standards and potentially earn seals and credentials on their diplomas, which we'll talk about in a minute. Another part of this is multiple pathways for demonstrating proficiency. So New York high school exams will be just one of several ways that students can demonstrate their mastery of high school learning standards and attributes defined in the portrait of a graduate that Dr. Walsh just spoke about. So students can leverage alternative methods to show proficiency, offering a more holistic and equitable evaluation of their abilities. So with this, some options may include work-based or service-based learning experiences, capstone projects, dual credit programs, CTE programs, and earning a New York State seal like civic readiness or a by-literacy. So as noted before, none of this has been finalized, so right now our students that are nearing graduation will still have to adhere to the current credit and assessment requirements that are out there now. Transformation number four is moving to one diploma. So under the current model, we have the local diploma, Regents diploma, and Regents diploma with advanced designation. With this proposed change, starting in fall 2027, if approved, New York State would move to one single diploma, which would be the New York State High School diploma. Therefore, looking at the timeline, students graduating in June 2028 and beyond would earn this unified diploma. And this change aims to create consistency in diploma standards across the state. With one diploma, the advanced designation would disappear, but students would have the ability to earn seals and endorsements for excellence. So they'll have the opportunity to earn seals to showcase their knowledge, skills, and achievements in specific areas of study, and these honors will provide a way for students to highlight student excellence and proficiency beyond their general diploma. It hasn't yet been defined how districts will be able to develop local seals and endorsements, but that will be an opportunity as well. But New York State seals like civic readiness and by-literacy, which we do, will be used, so that's good to hear. With the one diploma, they are also looking to instate a statewide transcript. So with this, starting with the 2029 graduating cohort, a standardized statewide transcript would be introduced, and this transcript would reflect the New York State Portrait of a Graduate emphasizing key competencies, skills, and achievements. It still isn't determined what this will look like, but there are some systems out there already offering transcripts that look like this. We've already looked into ones like Mastery Transcript, and although nothing has been determined, we like to think that we're getting ahead of this and getting a leg up on it to see what that would look like. So looking at this timeline, these would be the diploma requirements by cohort, and when we talk about the cohort, it refers to the year that the students began ninth grade in September. So for example, the 2024 cohort are our current ninth graders. So looking at this timeline, the cohort of 2023 and prior would still have the current diploma requirements leading to the one-of-three diploma, either the local Regents or Regents with advanced designation. One change that they are putting in effect is that eligible students may request an exemption due to major life events, so that will happen. With our cohorts 2024 through 2026, which are our current seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, it would be one diploma, the advanced designation would still be in effect as a seal of distinction. They would still be under the current credit requirements, and diploma assessment requirements would be decoupled by the fall of 2027, so that would be for our current ninth graders. Cohorts 2027 through 2028, which are fifth and sixth graders, would be under that one diploma with the redefined seals and endorsements, including advanced designation. New credit requirements would be in effect, and the sunset diploma assessment requirements, so the Regents exams wouldn't be necessary for graduation. And cohort 2029 and prior, so that's our grade four and younger, is one diploma with the redefined seals and endorsements, including advanced designation. The statewide transcript would also be in effect, and proficiency in both learning standards and the Portrait of a Graduate would be required. So that's what the rollout would look like per cohort.
In terms of the overall timeline, this year, the state's working to finalize what the Portrait of a Graduate looks like, which they have and they've proposed. And they're also looking to finalize exemptions for diploma assessments, requirements like major life events such as, example, the death of a family member or some other hardship where in previous years, if the students had missed a ton of school as a result of that, they might not have earned all the credits in order to graduate, they're trying to put that into effect now. Next year, what they're looking to do is release details of what the new credit requirements could look like. Now, we have a ton of questions about what this means in terms of practicality, in terms of scheduling, in terms of what it looks like for our program, but they're talking about releasing those ideas next year. In '26 and '27, they're prioritizing, they're identifying priority standards and reformatting the learning standards, that's what their proposed timeline says. They will then release what I think is going to be very interesting but a very difficult hurdle for the state to do, which is release Portrait of a Graduate rubrics and guidance. So for example, if they are eventually going to move to a transcript where students are being assessed towards proficiency on the components of a Portrait of a Graduate, districts need clear guidance about what that would look like and how to build towards that and how to develop those competencies. So that is projected to happen at this point on the '26 and '27 school year. One of the other components that are not talked about in terms of the transformations but are proposed for the '26 and '27 school year are the ideas of mandating financial literacy and climate education as being required for a student's high school program. In '27-'28, we will go to one diploma, and what we mean by sunset the diploma assessment requirements, that does not mean, again, that Regents go away. Regents exams will still be an option for our students to take, to demonstrate proficiency towards those diploma requirements. But they are in '27-'28 saying that they can be demonstrated, those requirements can also be demonstrated in another way. So that means a student could either take an exam or demonstrate it in another way. Again, the second way has not yet been defined yet, so we're still waiting on that. They are also going to give us ideas on how we can redefine and develop seals that we ourselves may want to use, and they're going to finalize rubrics and guidance for those standards. In '28-'29, they are going to highlight and disseminate best practices because they know that in fall '29 and beyond, they are going to go to one statewide transcript that, again, not only talks about what students have done in terms of credit requirements, but they are also talking about phasing in the Portrait of a Graduate at that point as well. They will also, in 2029, release assessments that are aligned with those prioritized learning standards, meaning that they are going to take the next few years to identify what those priority standards are, format them, give guidance towards them, and then Regents exams down the road will be aligned to those priority standards. So what does that mean for us right now? Well, it means we have a lot of questions just as of yet, and we know that there's a lot of time between '24-'25 and 2033 potentially. So how do we examine ourselves in terms of how we're positioned in terms of those four transformations? Well, in terms of Portrait of a Graduate, as Dr. Walsh said, we already have experience working with that concept using the IB learner profile. So this is something that we've already done as part of the IB diploma program and as part of the NYPD program. In terms of transformation two, redefining credits to focus on proficiency, well, our goal is always mastery, but we want to make sure that we have a rigorous course catalog that includes IB, AP, dual enrollment course options with local colleges, we ensure a high level of student achievement. For example, if they get rid of the advanced Regents diploma, I would anticipate still a high number of our students earning the advanced designation seal on their one diploma down the road. We already have about ninety percent of our students each year earning that advanced Regents diploma. I would see that would be something that we could naturally move over as that time evolves. We also have a different credential, we have the IB diploma, which is about twenty-nine to thirty percent of our students each year, some years more, some years less, where those students earn a completely different seal of approval, the IB diploma. Again, accredited, you'll notice that a lot of our rigorous course offerings are accredited by somebody else. So for example, a dual enrollment offers kids the opportunity to earn credits through a local university or college. IB is an outside standard that would say, yes, you have done a rigorous coursework and demonstrated proficiency or mastery in that subject area. AP would do the same thing. So we're trying to make sure that we have people telling us that we are doing a good job by our students to prepare them for life after high school. Finally, the other things we've been working on over the past few years, we've been partnering with local universities and colleges on a number of different new experiences for our students that include opportunities for our students to take dual enrollment classes, which we've increased, but also have the opportunity to include visits to universities, the opportunity to do college-level work on a college campus. So that's one of the things that we will be also presenting in January, we'll be talking about our new course offerings as well. And then we have also increased our opportunities for students interested in trades and careers after high school. Many of our students may not look for a four-year path in college, they might be looking for something else, and so we've been partnering with BOSI's to provide our students with training in trades and careers after high school. In terms of sunsetting the diploma requirements, it is really important for everyone to understand that Regents are not going away. There will still be an option for students to take Regents well beyond 2025-26. We also have here in Rockville Center, we use the IB internal assessment practices. So if New York State comes out and says there are other options for students to demonstrate proficiency or demonstrate competency in a subject matter, we have practiced doing this. Our IB internal assessment practices could serve as a model for how students could demonstrate proficiency in courses. We also have a wide history of service projects and efforts such as our CAS project and our middle school service project. Transformation four, moving to one diploma. So again, as we move to one diploma, one of the things that we want to make sure that our students do is continue to demonstrate themselves to colleges and beyond that they are prepared for rigorous coursework. So we already have credentials like the IB diploma. Again, like I talked about, the Regents with advanced designation seal of distinction, I can imagine many of our students still getting that. And as Ms. Ramsey talked about, there are currently already New York State seals that students can learn, earn, excuse me, including the seal of civic readiness, the seal of by-literacy. And of course, we want to make sure that we continue to expand and offer our students a wide range of different types of courses that are not only aligned to their interests but prepare them for life after high school. So some frequently asked questions. Are graduation requirements changing right now? No. All current graduation requirements stay in effect until those specific changes are approved by the Board of Regents. Again, this entire presentation has not been approved by the Board of Regents. So please understand that this is still a process. All of these changes were proposals by the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission. Is the New York State Department of Education eliminating Regents exams? No. The Regents are used not only to satisfy the state's current diploma requirements, but specific Regents exams are also used to satisfy federal requirements. So for example, there's a federal law that says all students need to have at least one exam where they can show proficiency in a math, a science, and a English, excuse me. The Regents exam provide our opportunities for our students to demonstrate those things in terms of the federal requirement. So this is the big one. If a student right now is in eighth or ninth grade, must they take Regents exams? Yes. Again, none of these changes have been in effect yet. If there are options that change while our eighth and ninth graders are in high school, we will make sure that we are continuing our conversation about the Blue Ribbon recommendations with the community, with our parents, and with our students and our teachers. What are the questions that we have? Well, we've been talking about this since the report was released in November, and there are a lot of questions that educators across Long Island and on our neighboring districts have. For example, what criteria will the state provide that outlines for educators evidence of proficiency in lieu of a standardized exam? So if it's not a standardized exam, what is it? And how will we try to prepare our students for those different types of options should we choose to offer them? Second, how does the redefining of credit impact the way we schedule and offer courses? Again, we're really used to, for the last one hundred years, a set amount of time and a certain grade allows you to earn credit in a class. If they're changing that, does that change the way we have to schedule? Three, will there be criteria and guidance for how a student chooses to offer seals and endorsements? So for example, we have a number of different courses that students might choose in a certain area. Is it possible for Rockville Center to offer its own seals and distinctions that we could put on our own diplomas? And then third, oh, excuse me, fourth, what is the best way to align to the new statewide transcript that they're proposing in terms of Portrait of a Graduate? How will schools be able to monitor, track, or identify student progress towards the skills and dispositions outlined, and what will those promised rubrics look like? So again, we have a tremendous amount of questions, there are a lot of things that are unanswered, and again, New York State has not adopted these, they have just, in terms of the Regents, have only spoken favorably about those outcomes. But we do not have, and I spoke to someone on the commission today, we do not have any proposed timeline about when those pieces are going to be formally adopted by the Board of Regents. And we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'll turn it over to the Board for questions and comments.
Thank you. I get the message and appreciate that this is not happening immediately, that this is the beginning of the multi-year phase-in process, and clearly some things are changing, but many things are staying the same in the way that we do education here in Rockville Center. And I'm wondering if you can just speak to that idea about, many other states are eliminating exit exams, so is that the focus here? And we have never really relied exclusively on directives from New York State as we educate our students here, so how can we reassure parents and students that we will continue to provide the rigorous and, you know, sort of education that our community has come to expect here in Rockville Center? So in terms of what's changing and what's not changing, how are we positioned here?
I think we're positioned quite well. So we have a wide variety of courses for our students to take, to demonstrate to colleges and highly competitive colleges that they can do college-level work in certain subject areas. That's number one. Number two, we're not going to rush. So these are recommendations. That doesn't mean we need to change everything right now. I think one of the things that, you know, we have to do as a community is sit down and have a conversation about what these recommendations look like, could it look like for us? And then we also need to sit and say, what do those exams look like in terms of how our students do? It could be very reasonable for students to turn around and say, the easiest way for me to demonstrate competency is to take the Regents exam, and that's how I'll do it. It could be very easy for us to have a conversation and say, for a few students, say, for example, that might be struggling and exams do really well in a course, but maybe not necessarily always on a three-hour exam, we might have to develop different ways for students to earn credit that way. But again, they haven't really outlined those yet, Dr. Downey, so that's one of the things that, that's one of the reasons I'm saying being cautious right now. So there's no rush for us to make any major changes, there's no rush for us to do anything other than keep building on the programs we wish to build on right now.
Thank you. And it seems that you mentioned there are two ways. So students will have to demonstrate proficiency in both the high school learning standards and the components of the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. So we have been doing both of those things in terms of demonstrating proficiency by taking Regents exams for the learning standards. Now, the component- Now, the components of that New York State Portrait of a Graduate that Dr. Walsh mentioned seems to align with many of the IB learner profile traits. That has been embedded for our students since middle school, but it's not something that we have assessed.
We don't track anything towards the IB learner profile, so we don't turn around and say, a student gets a seventy-five on critical thinking, you know what I mean? So we don't do anything along those lines. So one of the, one of the key questions we still have, and one of the big hurdles the state has, is to try to develop, A, rubrics that make sense and can be translated to high schools all across New York State for each one of those different components of Portrait of a Graduate. But then, two, not only should they give rubrics, but then, what do the systems look like to track progress towards that? So does that mean if we're all going to use the same, you know, transcript, does that mean, does everyone have to use the same kind of learning management system? Does that mean that we're, we're tagging different courses towards different attributes and that's sufficient? So that again, is one of those big questions that I have, and I know that Dr. Walsh and I have spoken extensively on that. Sure, go ahead.
I think it's a great question, and I think if we talk to some seniors in the building right now who are going through the college application process where they're putting together their resume, college essay applications, if we showed them the learner prof, that profile, I should say, they'd be able to point out things on their resume that they've done that said, oh yeah, that fits in that category. Oh, that shows me as a good communicator, that shows me as a problem solver. So I think what they're trying to do here, which is pretty cool, is to explicitly have the student identify those things that they've done over time that they might not have otherwise realized that they, that they did. It brings it to the forefront and makes it a priority. So, Ms. Ramsey mentioned that we had, we've started the process of looking at systems that can help us and help students identify that, that master transcript program that she mentioned is built on that. Students can tag certain activities and credentials that they've earned and map them to that. So it's a, it's a very explicit experience where they're really pointing out and mindful of the things that they've done already, wow, I didn't realize, I've done so many different things that are, that it could be considered innovative problem solving. So I think it's a matter of making it part of the conversation. So when counselors and teachers are working with students, they're using that language, common language, and things that, so students start to recognize, wow, I'm really doing more than I maybe thought, and now I'm showcasing it and putting it somewhere tangible.
And that sounds more in line with the seal of biliteracy or the seal of civic readiness where there is that sort of tracking of progress to achieve that. Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation and trying to at least clarify where we stand at the moment. I'm going to pick up where we just left off. I do think tracking skills or dispositions is a very amorphous thing to do. And I know that in creating this, like, set of standards, there was a lot of input on the commission as they created it. Do schools have any input now as the process is continuing to be rolled out to give feedback or give suggestions?
So, the answer is yes. So, I don't think there is a plan for the Regents to adopt every single component of this in one vote. So before the Regents consider components of this, there is a sixty-day comment period where educators across, across New York State have the opportunity to have comments about, say for example, as they adopt the Portrait of a Graduate. Before that goes on an agenda, there are sixty days where there are comments where that can happen. So, you know, again, in speaking to one of the members of the, of the Blue Ribbon Commission today, right now, I asked again, are there any scheduled votes for any of the components? There are not, as of right now. So, once they do that, they would say, if they announced that we're going to do it in March, we're going to adopt Portrait of a Graduate in March, we'd have to back out sixty days where there would be the opportunity for comment.
Great, so you'll keep us, like, informed as that's happening? And I'm assuming if there's things that we want to say in the process, we'll make sure we're doing that, yes?
I think this is the start of the conversation on Blue Ribbon, and I think this is going to be a component of the superintendent's report, if not month, if not bi-weekly, monthly.
Okay, great. My only other comment, it's not really a question. I like that there's, one of the things that I see is a benefit, even though it's going to be hard to standardize at the beginning, I think for a lot of students, the flexibility is needed because there's a lot that goes into a year's worth of coursework, a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of success, and that doesn't always translate to performance on a Regents exam. So for those kids who have really grown over the course of the year and really worked hard in a course to get like a sixty-four and not get credit is devastating. So, I appreciate that this will hopefully open up flexibility for kids in that regard. I'm also hoping it will open up flexibility in terms of students being more free to pursue their areas of either interest or strength. So I, I think it holds promise, I just think figuring out how we're rolling it out is going to remain the biggest question.
I think both, both points you make are extremely valid. We, we, I know many examples of, of students that might get a seventy-five at the end of the year in the course grade, but really have, struggle with test anxiety or something like that, where sitting for a three-hour exam is an overwhelming experience. And so, when the state comes out and devise, and devises what those options look like, we would have to consider carefully for, you know, groups of students, how we roll those out. That's number one. But we would want clear direction from the state on what those options look like and what latitude we have as a district to employ them. So that's really important. Number two, you know, when we talk about trying to, to track towards dispositions or to track something towards those lines, you know, it's very amorphous right now about what that would look like in terms of a system. So that to me would also be something that we need some more clarity on. But again, this is the start of the conversation, this is New York State providing us the opportunity to have a conversation. And then, keep informed and this is a conversation, so we'll definitely make sure that we continue to do that.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Dr. Walsh mentioned that we're in kind of the planning year right now, so I'm just curious if they've given you an indication of when kind of the next timeline update would be, or a touch point for them to give us something before the end of the year?
They're supposed to, according to their timeline, adopt the Portrait of a Graduate this school year. So, if they're planning on doing that, they would need to move within the next six months. So, if they're planning to do it in March, they would need to pretty much announce it in January to give that sixty-day period. If they're planning on doing it in June, they could back that out sixty days from there. So, if they're sticking to their timeline, which New York State has moved off of their proposed timelines in the past, but if they are sticking to their timeline, we should expect something in the new year pretty shortly and pretty quickly about when that adoption of a Portrait of a Graduate might take place.
Okay, because I think, you know, we've learned that recommendations can become requirements quickly, and I just want to make sure that as we've developed our strategic planning committee, that this is like of, you know, kind of threaded through everything we're thinking about, because at any moment, I'm hoping we do have a say, as Mrs. Gruner said, and I think we should. It's kind of the, what we just adopted for the regionalization and having our voice heard. So I just worry that we may be caught by surprise at some point with something that is not digestible and is not right for our students, it's a large state, the communities are different, the upstate regions are different than the downstate regions, we learn this from when we go to different conferences. So I can only hope that the seals of readiness kind of mirror the, the profile, which are just great foundational things we want our students to have, but that the seals actually mirror the curriculum of what we teach in Rockville Center and what we can get our kids to attain. I just worry about that period of when it shifts, so I just want us to be prepared.
Well, I think, you know, one, one of the things we're doing at the next strategic planning meeting is going through this presentation. So this is trying to design a three-year strategic plan in the context of what could this potentially look like? One thing I will not do though is tell me that, tell anyone that the state can't surprise us at any time. And they have been known to surprise us with timelines, they have been known to make recommendations into requirements with little or no, little or no advanced warning. So, I, I won't speak about what their plans are, other than what their stated plans are and what they've published.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess I, my, my ask is, knowing all of that, and I fully agree, obviously, that in our strategic planning, we're not just updating and talking, but we're planning, and, and that includes communication strategies of how we would roll something different out and what phasing. And if there is, to one of the questions you put, that was a remaining question, which was about the seals, we should have a wish list ready for what we would want our seals to look like, that we could offer, and how it aligns to our curriculum, or if they don't already, how we would then align curriculum to some of those seals.
We've already started, I already have like a, like a four quad block about what our seals could look like with our current coursework. So another, that's the other thing that we really need to focus on, is as we recommend new courses, how could they fit towards a, a new seal? So for example, I'm going to use like a computer science or technology as one. So, right now, we have AP Computer Science, we have AP Computer Science Principles, those are two classes. We also have Prompt Engineering, and we also have Python. Are four computer classes enough to earn a seal towards Computer Science or whatever that would look like? So, we do have courses in different areas that I think would make sense. Same kind of thing in business, we have a number of different business electives that students could take along with IB Business. And does DECA count for something? So, you know, one of the, you know, combining the idea of an extracurricular, a very in-depth extracurricular activity with a rigorous coursework, is that something else that could potentially, down the road, count for credit? So, we are planning in terms of our recommendations about how our extracurricular could potentially fit with, with our current coursework. And again, it becomes very, very important, the idea of offering students a wide and varied menu. You can almost think of it like as, you know, are you kind of picking a major in high school? Like, are you, I really like this particular area, how does this work? Think about it the same thing way for the arts, think about it the same way for sciences. For students that really like design, like they like the woodshop, but they also like art class. Like, could that be something down the road, that there's a design seal? Like, they've learned how to design in different mediums. So, these are all different things that we've been discussing as options. And if they give us the flexibility to, to offer some of these things for students, that we would welcome. Like, we would welcome that opportunity to allow students to pursue their passion here at Southside High School and still be assured, our parents could be assured that they're rigorously prepared.
I appreciate that, and I think it's great for students and it keeps them engaged, because if you, if they look at this kind of loosely, they may say, oh, none of that matters anymore. And then, instead, we keep them on the path of, this is why this matters to you and what you want to do, and kind of pushing them forward on maybe just a new track. So I think, I like what you're saying about how you're already thinking that way, and that's really appreciated, so thank you all, and hopefully good news.
And in terms of communication, we started the conversation with the high school staff already. So we had that first meeting with staff where we've gone over all of the recommendations. The next step is actually to go to the middle school in February, where we're going to do the same kind of thing with the faculty there as well. So, again, this won't, this will be the first of many times that people are starting to hear about what these recommendations are and the potential impacts or not that they may have here on Rockville Center.
Thank you very much. I think we all have to appreciate the layers of ambiguity from New York State Ed and how difficult that really makes moving forward in any kind of like a systematic and logical way. So I appreciate that, just off the bat. I agree a lot with what Ms. Hackett was just saying regarding our strategic planning committee. I think the portrait that New York State is giving us right now, while there are specific dispositions on there, those dispositions in general are very broad and are left to be interpreted. And I think that as we take that time to really root through the feedback that our community has given us about the dispositions and attributes that we want to see in our graduates, that our focus is really on our community and what our community wants for our students first, that is then aligned with what New York State is kind of showing us. And I think that as we go through the strategic planning, just keeping in mind, knowing that these are the attributes we want to see, we're working them potentially into a new mission or vision, potentially not. But we need to take these dispositions now and really engrain them into everything that we're doing, because that's essentially what the state is going to ask us to do. And I know that we have the IB learner profile, and that has sat at the center of a lot of what we do, but I would really request that that profile is put to the side and that the attributes and dispositions from our community is what's going to make up our new learner profile. I think that's important, not to say that we can't keep some of those attributes and dispositions, but I don't want to just lean into that because that exists. I want to kind of look forward to keeping everything in mind and really designing and developing curriculum, school culture around those attributes. And then as we move into developing seals, like we have the seal of civic readiness, the seal of biliteracy, those are very defined, our students have been participating in this for years at this point, and those are great things to have. But if we're given that opportunity to develop our own seals, I think it's really interesting, and I think it's a unique opportunity for us to redefine what a Rockville Center education can offer. I think it's a way for us to differentiate ourselves from other surrounding districts. I think it's a way for us to elevate our status among other Long Island School Districts, New York State School Districts, just thinking about what are the possibilities, how can we be innovative, what can we offer that are really going to send our kids out into the world better prepared than everyone else is? Because I think we have the resources and I think we have the personnel to do that. I'd also say like, we're in a review for social studies this year. Two of the competencies on this portrait, global citizen and cultural competence, are embedded in the social studies framework. They're embedded in the practices. So as we look to redesign curriculum from kindergarten, not just the middle school and the high school, like goes back to that point of ingraining in our curriculum, because we can interpret that and we can develop our students to really have cultural competence, and not just to be citizens of our school, community, our state, but really that idea of being a global citizen. So I think that's kind of a really nice opportunity for us as well. I mean, I'm looking forward to this, I know it's, it feels heavy and it feels like a lot, and it actually kind of feels a little crazy, but I really do, I'm, I'm kind of happy and excited about, it, it almost feels like an opportunity for a reset and an opportunity to really bring our kids, I don't know, just into a great place, so looking forward to it.
I feel similar. So, when the idea, the ideas that these were going to come out, all these recommendations were going to come out in November, I was very cautiously optimistic that it's going to give us a lot of latitude to, to be very innovative. So if you go back to, I believe it, Mary, can you just go back a couple slides to where it goes to the overall timeline, right there? So when they talk about the idea of twenty-eight and twenty-nine, where they're highlighting and disseminating best practices to encourage innovation and implementation, that's where we want to be, right? So by the time we get to that kind of area, which, if you think about it, lines up pretty well with our strategic planning, right? In terms of a, a time horizon, that gives us not only the time to build that plan, it gives us the time to implement it, evaluate it, and then determine, are these really the innovative practices we want to go to? But I also think that when we come back in January and we're starting to do presentations on some new course offerings that we have, I think you'll start to see that there are threads of what potential pathways could look like here for students. So I just gave the, you know, the one example of computer science, but what does that look like in terms of a social studies for our high school students and, and middle school students? What does that look like in terms of art, music, dance, that kind of thing? So, you'll see, you'll see some presentations for proposals for the board to consider that at this point, we feel pretty confident will put us very well positioned, not only to demonstrate to our community that the values that they've outlined in the survey are heard, recognized, and implemented, but also to colleges and to life beyond high school that our students are preparing.
I too take consolation in the fact that since your arrival, you've had a vision for where the district should go prior to the recommendations even being published. You and your team have visited schools, both high schools on Long Island and beyond, and colleges, and you have a lot of ideas in terms of where we should be going as a district for our students. And I think this work fits in somewhat nicely actually to, to the plan. So I agree, we should continue with our work and then see, once we get more information from the state, where in fact, that fits into the framework that we believe is best for us and our students. So thank you in advance for all of the work, and we look forward to you updating us at the January meeting.
Thank you very much.
Turning to items for discussion and policies. Currently at stage one, we have sixty-one-eleven staff conflict of interest. Comments or questions on sixty-one-eleven?
There are some pretty significant changes here, and to keep them in line with education law as well as the renaming here of the policy, you know, we're, we're looking to ensure that hiring is based on merit.
Thank you, okay, to move this?
I just had one question, I wanted to just see what everybody thought about. The, the final sentence basically of the policy has to do with us employing a teacher related to a board member. I believe I'm correct, Mara, in saying that New York State law, that, that's, that's part of New York State Ed law?
Yes, so under New York State Ed law, if you have a
Yes, so under New York State Ed law, if you have a teacher, a teacher being hired that is related to a board member, you have to have a two-third vote of the whole board. So in the case of Rockville Center, you need to have four votes.
So I just wanted to pose the question of whether we should just include that to be any full-time employee because teacher only captures one portion of our employees, doesn't really capture administrators and, you know, so I don't know what everybody else thinks about it. I just wanted to put it out there as a thing to consider.
Thank you.
I agree.
I'm okay bringing it to any staff member, yes?
Full-time.
Full-time staff member? Can we make that change?
Yes, we can.
Are we okay moving this based on that change added to the next meeting?
I am, yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Also at stage one, we have 7513 Administration of Medication.
Yeah, again, just keeping in line with policy and best practices in terms of how a student obtains and takes any medication during the school day. As well as at school-sponsored activities outside the school day.
Okay, to move this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And 7515, we have Students and Staff with Life-Threatening Health Conditions.
This is the same thing, just changing some language, keeping things consistent throughout the policy book.
Okay, to move this?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Currently at stage two, we have 5211 Gate Receipts and Admissions.
Yep, this is to rescind.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
So move that to stage three to rescind.
Yes.
5240 Property Tax Exemptions.
Yep.
Yep.
The same.
Okay to move this?
Yes.
5250 Sale and Disposal of School District Property.
No changes since last, yep.
Okay to move?
Yep.
5340 Borrowing of Funds.
Good.
Yep.
And 5350 Payroll.
Same, yes.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Currently at stage three, we have 4310 Superintendent of Schools. Okay to move this to approval?
Yes, this is cleaned up, good.
4320 Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education Relations. Okay to move?
Good.
5130 Continency Budget.
5150, yep.
5150, sorry. These lights are not being kind to my eyes. I'm really struggling even with the glasses. 5210 Revenues?
Yes, fine.
Okay to move for approval? All right, thank you to the Policy Committee for all of your work as always. Opportunity for Superintendent, Mr. Gavin.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to provide the community with an update on the Foundation Formula, Foundation Aid Formula that has been proposed under the Rockefeller Foundation. So as we've mentioned in the past, New York State, it will be considering changes and updates to its formula for Foundation Aid. These recommendations were just presented by the Rockefeller Foundation and they were released on December 1st. While again, these are just recommendations at this stage, not yet part of the formula, it's important to consider their implications. First, one of the recommendations is to replace the outdated regional cost index with the comparable wage index for teachers, or CSWIFT. This measure is updated annually and reflects the cost of employing teachers in various regions. If adopted, this change could positively impact our district by allocating more funding to areas like ours, which are higher-cost areas like Nassau County and in the city. Updating poverty measures. The report also suggests replacing the outdated poverty metric from the 2000 census with more current data from the small area income and poverty estimates. Additionally, it proposes giving greater weight to districts with higher concentrations of poverty. While this could redirect additional resources to districts that serve vulnerable populations, including ours, it's essential to recognize that the specifics of this formula could significantly impact the overall distribution of funds all across the state. Another proposal recommends removing the $500 minimum per student payment currently guaranteed to all districts regardless of need. This change would primarily affect very wealthy districts, the top 40 wealthiest districts in the state, as it redirects funding to districts with greater financial challenges. While at this point, we are not a primary beneficiary of a minimum grant, this change could reduce state support for some neighboring communities as well. The last and most important recommendation and the most concerning recommendation for me is the phasing out of Save Harmless. Save Harmless currently protects districts from funding decreases due to declining enrollment or changes of need. These payments have provided stability for our district and others all across the state and reducing them potentially by up to 50% over five years would have a negative impact on our funding overall. While the report suggests coupling this change with the other reforms, the potential loss of funding will require us to have careful planning and advocacy. While some of these recommendations could benefit our district, there are others that present significant challenges. Again, these are not final decisions. We will continue to monitor these developments closely and again, continue to advocate for a funding formula that equitably supports the students of Rockville Center. In conclusion, I would like to wish all of our Rockville Center families a happy holiday season and best wishes for a happy new year.
Thank you. Opportunity for Board Members, Mrs. Messier?
I'd like to start by congratulating all of our student athletes for an outstanding season. Year after year, athletic programs continue to grow and excel. Our student-athlete skill, perseverance and teamwork have not only contributed to their success on the field, but have also set a strong example for our younger athletes, showing them what can be achieved through determination and commitment. We're incredibly proud of all you've accomplished and we're excited to see the legacy they continue to build. Also like to thank our middle school drama performers for an amazing performance. The performance of This Is Me was a powerful celebration of individuality and courage, beautifully brought to life through their talent and passion. It was an inspiring reminder for all of us to remember and embrace our authentic selves. Mr. Bartels, this is your last meeting with us tonight at the dais. I really wanted to just take a moment to thank you for everything you've done for our students and our school community. You leave a legacy of unwavering commitment and we're truly better for having you, for having had you as a part of our team. Your impact will continue to inspire and guide us for years to come. Thank you for all you've given to our school district and I wish you nothing but the best in your well-deserved retirement. And finally, I just want to wish all the Rockville Center School District community a happy holiday season and I hope that everyone has a wonderful break.
Thank you. Mrs. Hackett?
Congratulations to our students in the Middle School Review and all our athletes who were honored tonight. Want to also congratulate Mrs. Mark on her first concert season as the Director of the Arts. She did a fantastic job at the one I was at last week. Tonight, I'm going to focus my comments around two very special individuals who have had the pleasure of working with for the last eight years, who are both retiring. Mike Anderson is one of Rockville Center's true unsung heroes. He's not someone who the community may know as well as other administrators, but he's been every bit as important to the foundation of what makes our district great. As our Director for Technology, he's led our device implementation strategies, our network, our many changes of infrastructure and essentially all the vital elements needed to run a district with 3,500 students and hundreds of employees. He's navigated the district through major challenges and turning points. His quick action and deep knowledge for our network saved us from extreme potential pitfalls. What I'm describing is that of a stellar Director of Technology. And now let me tell you about the man. Mike is a man of high integrity and true character. He's a family man, a devoted husband, brother, father and grandfather. He's a former school board member who is extremely supportive to us along our journey and to me in particular through my presidency. He is kind to the core. He shares books that influenced him, words of wisdom and pride for his family. The district is so lucky to have had him working with us these past 17 years. I sincerely thank Mike for his service, wish him a happy retirement and will miss him immensely. I've dreaded this next part, and that's sending Mr. Bartels away from us as he retires at the end of the month. Not one of us sitting up here knows this job without Robert. We have all been extremely lucky to have been led and guided by Robert in various capacities over his 25-year tenure. Another man who doesn't need the spotlight, Robert has been a steady hand, a quiet leader and a voice of reason. He is thoughtful, intelligent, kind and generous. He's been an incredible mentor and leader among his staff and a valuable partner to central administration, superintendent and to the board. I will never forget the way he stepped up to lead this district in our transition and brought us all to where we are now. We simply would be nothing without Robert and his meticulous care for our children of our district and the respect he has shown to our community. Personally, I've enjoyed all the many years, hours and minutes I've been able to work with and learn from him. It is hard to imagine us without you, Robert. Thank you for your leadership, your commitment and your kindness. I wish you an extremely restful and fulfilling retirement. Enjoy your beautiful family and we will miss you more than you know. I wish everybody a very happy holiday season, healthy and joyful holiday break to all.
Thank you. Mrs. Gruner?
It's a tough act to follow, but I will echo the congratulations to Mike and Robert. And I actually sat in on two budget webinars over the past few weeks trying to wrap my head around a very complex topic. I feel like, you know, it, there's so much there to learn and I, I really do just want to commend Robert. There's a lot of districts out there, I think, really worried currently about where they're going to land once the Foundation Aid Formula is finalized. And I, I really don't think we can overstate what a good position we are sitting in right now because of his careful planning over the years. Not to say that we don't also have to consider what the new formula might do for us, but I think we've been left in a much stronger position than many other districts out there. So I just want to say thank you one more time and wish you all the best, Robert. And you never showed the stress that maybe you might be, might have been feeling underneath, but I appreciate that as well. And just to all of our athletes, our performers, our students in general, it's been a, December is always a crunch. You know, you've been going at it since September for three solid months, teachers and students alike. This is when all the last tests get put in before the break and so I'm just, good luck to everybody. Keep on working for a couple more days and then enjoy some time with family during the break. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Downing?
Thank you, and thanks. Thank you to all of our performers who got us kicked off tonight with the performance from the Middle School Review for sharing your talents onstage. And congratulations to all of our student athletes who were honored here tonight for your outstanding athletic performances and you remind us of all the life lessons that sports teaches us. Teamwork, leadership, cooperation, time management and lifelong friendships and memories. And our chamber singers and our wood design club visited the Sandell Senior Center recently and one of our board goals this year has really been increased community engagement. And it's so important to make these opportunities to show off our students' hard work and talent. I've also been attending the Nassau Suffolk School Board Presentations. Last night, there was one on legal and financial issues and certainly the Foundation Aid Formula needs to be updated using census data that's over 20 years old. But as a board, we continue to advocate for a fair share of our state funding that we need to educate our students. And on that note of funding, I want to thank the Rockville Center Education Foundation who continue to support our students and our schools through their volunteer work. They recently ran the School of Palooza auction, raising money for grants that fund projects outside the scope of our school budget. And, you know, this is a positive and productive way to support our students and our schools in a time where we have to do more with less. These nonprofit foundations and grant funding become even more important. And Mr. Bartels, after decades of service, we are giving you the one thing you never wanted, which is the spotlight. Your high standards certainly leave a lasting legacy and I also wish you a retirement filled with joy and friends and family and finally, perhaps a chance to stay out of the spotlight. Our best wishes to Mike Anderson as well. With our greatest thanks, wishing you a happy retirement and a happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Thank you. In this season of gratitude, just like to echo how grateful I am to be a member of this Rockville Center community. Grateful to be a member of this board with my fellow board members up here, everyone to my left as well. I wish all of our students and staff and their families and every community member a very happy and healthy holiday season and best wishes for the year ahead. Mr. Bartels, you and I had a conversation earlier this evening and I promised you I wouldn't elaborate much in public, so I'm going to simply say thank you. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for everything that you have represented for our students and our staff in all of your years here. It's very much appreciated and you will be missed. And Mr. Anderson as well, thank you for all of your years of service to our district. I will miss you as well and we wish you both health and happiness in your retirement. At this time, we will have opportunity for visitors. The public is reminded to address questions or remarks to the board through its president. It's requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. The public is asked to state their name and address and to please limit their time to three minutes. Yeah, I think that one, is that one on? Thank you. Just press, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
It turns red, it's really cool. Anna Elias, I am a middle school teacher here representing the teachers and the teacher assistants. Do you need my address too? No, okay. So I am here today to share a glimpse of the vibrant and impactful year our middle school has had so far. Our students have not only excelled in their academics, but have also demonstrated a remarkable commitment to community service, creativity and sportsmanship. Our seventh grade students kicked off the year with a patriotic spirit, honoring Patriots' Day by donating to the Beacon House, participating in the Tunnel to Tower Run and initiating acts of kindness in memory to those who have sacrificed for our nation. Eighth graders have been equally dedicated to service, undertaking various projects that resonate deeply with them. From supporting cancer research to aiding children's hospitals and local organizations, their efforts have made a tangible difference in the lives of many. The entire school community united to honor our veterans with heartfelt thank you cards and spread holiday cheer to residents of local assisted living facilities. Their letters brought joy and warmth to those who may have felt isolated during the festive season. Our athletic teams have showcased their skills and sportsmanship, fostering a sense of camaraderie and healthy competition. The creative spirits of our students have flourished through our fall production of The Show's The Thing, a delightful showcase of talent that brought joy to both cast and audience. Additionally, our talented teachers, inspired by the captured movement acrylic pour paint professional development, exhibited their artistic prowess at the Lost Dog Art and Frame Company. Our life skills classes embrace the spirit of gratitude by hosting their annual Friendsgiving with friends from Long Beach. And as the holiday season approaches, our music department is preparing to enchant us with concerts. The festive spirit is evident in our classroom door decorations and our school-wide donation drive for the inn reflects our commitment to supporting those in need. We are immensely proud of our students' achievements and their dedication to making a positive impact on our community and we wish you all a warm and wonderful holiday season.
Likewise, thank you.
Let me begin by thanking Superintendent Gavin for his November 12th responses to the questions I asked at the last board meeting. Unfortunately, the answers provided were almost entirely deflections based on a clearly erroneous position that district policy permitting students to use bathrooms and locker rooms of the opposite sex is not a policy change. I again refer, as I did at the last board meeting, to Superintendent Gavin's very different response to June Cosgrove's question at the July 2023 board meeting, asking if male students are allowed in female locker rooms. Superintendent Gavin said nothing about state law requiring this. Superintendent Gavin said nothing about state law requiring this. If the board wishes to restore some measure of the credibility it has lost, it will climb down from the position that there is no policy change and that the district has had no choice but to permit students to use bathrooms and locker rooms for the opposite sex since 2019. That is not what the district policy was in 2023, and it is not how the district interpreted state law in 2023. If this board believes it can start allowing 22-year-old males to fully undress in a high school girl's locker room without following the open meetings law, I shudder to think of what else it believes it may do without following that law. The state human rights law provides protection against unlawful discrimination on the basis of a person's sex. That includes the right to sex segregated bathrooms and locker rooms for obvious reasons of privacy and safety. The district's policy of allowing students to use the bathrooms and locker rooms of the opposite sex eviscerates this right and makes a mockery of the human rights law's guarantees against sex-based discrimination. Gender-neutral, single occupancy bathrooms are available for all students. They are the obvious, common sense solution for students not wanting to use the bathroom or locker room designated for their sex for whatever reason. Allowing them to use the bathrooms and locker rooms of the opposite sex is completely unnecessary and is being done simply for the promotion of what has become a pet political issue of the far left. One final point. At the last meeting, I asked if any students have been disciplined for complaining about the policy change. In response, Superintendent Gavin has said, "No one has been disciplined for asking questions about this issue." I would like to know if anyone has been disciplined, any student has been disciplined for objecting to this new reality in any way, without the semantics of whether it's a policy change or not, or whether it's a question. Has any student been disciplined for objecting to having someone of the opposite sex come into their restroom?
So we had a similar question from another parent along those lines. I spoke with Dr. Walsh today. I have not heard of any student that have been disciplined for raising the subject, asking a question, or voicing an objection.
Thank you.
Rachel Farrak, 98 Arundel Road. I was advised that speaking on this issue today was pointless, that the issue of gender-assigned bathrooms has been settled by law, and nothing matters moving forward. I reject that notion, and I speak today on behalf of my daughters and my son and the protection of their individual freedoms. This is not just an issue of bathrooms. It is an issue of teaching our children, especially our daughters, to be compliant, to remain silent even when your instincts are screaming that something is not right, to be polite and just shut up and take it lest we offend someone or trigger their fragile ego. I understand that under Prop 1, technically, the Board of Ed must follow New York State guidelines. However, I speak from the perspective of common sense, which seems to have been overcome by wokeism. Here is the objective truth and what I will teach my children. Sex is binary. Men cannot become women. Women and girls deserve their own spaces in sports. Women and girls deserve safety, privacy, and fairness. My son also has a right to privacy. I will be challenged as follows. Why are we obsessing about something that never happens? Then, okay, it happens, but why are you such a bigot? Inclusivity matters more than how your son or daughter or the other 99% of the student body feels. However, I will hold the line, and I will stand my ground for my children, because though tonight we are talking about bathrooms, soon enough we will be talking about sports and the right of any male to decide that he can play on whichever team he feels he identifies with and ultimately robbing a girl of a spot or a win or a title. That never happens, right? Well, as per the United Nations, female athletes have lost to transgender rivals in over 400 competitions and have lost more than 890 medals in 29 different sports. It is a slippery slope, and as parents and as a community, we must hold the line. Putting the needs of a few ahead of the needs, wants, and rights of the majority is immoral, insane, and unsustainable. I will not allow anyone to weaponize our kindness as women. I will not allow my children to remain quiet and fearful in the name of inclusion. I will speak the truth and encourage my children to do the same, especially when it is uncomfortable or when their safety is in jeopardy. Thank you.
Roxia Rizzi, 55 Kennedy Avenue. I am the other parent who sent that email. At the last board meeting I attended, I asked the hypothetical question that everyone refused to answer. So I wrote this email. I want to know what the policy you had in place is, I'm reading the email, to protect students that are accused of assaulting another student in the restroom. How is the accused student protected from such incidents? For example, a boy in his biological gender bathroom, and a girl comes in who identifies as a boy but is biologically a girl. She leaves and says that the boy assaulted her. How do you plan on handling this? I think it's imperative that this board address these concerns and become proactive instead of reactive. And the response was, "In the case of the accusation, whether or not the student is transgender, we would investigate." We're talking about transgender, so let's not pretend we're talking about something else, okay? We're talking about children that are not biologically that sex, going into bathrooms that are not their biological sex. So let's not pretend that it's something else. I don't want to be gaslit, okay? We're talking about the safety of boys who deserve their own privacy, girls who deserve their own privacy, and how children's lives can become ruined, like we saw in other cases where boys have been accused of things that they didn't do. You don't have cameras in the bathroom, I assume. I feel it's safe to assume that. So how will you protect that boy? I don't think there are boys that are banging down the door to assault other boys. It might be a fight in a bathroom, but we're not talking about that. So to answer my question that way, to start out that way, is just not correct. You will investigate. I would like to know what the full-on policy is. That's what I would like to know, because I think it's so important for girls to be safe, and it's so important for boys to be safe. And we keep on talking about humanitarian law, but DASSA says every single child should have dignity for all students, not a select few. I implore you to understand that this is dangerous on levels that you can't even see right now. And if Rockville Center winds up in a newspaper because someone got hurt, physically assaulted, it'll be bigger problems than what we're talking about right now.
Thank you.
Hi. Kristin Glenn, Allen Road, 145 Allen Road. I want to start out with a very brief recap, because I only have three minutes, of a story that most people are very familiar with since it was national news, but some may not be. Loudoun County, Virginia. A 14-year-old male student identifying as a girl sexually assaulted a girl in the girl's bathroom after he physically refused to let her leave. Then, in an effort to cater to him and protect him, are we noticing a theme here? They moved him to another high school without a word about it, and he did it a second time. He was found guilty. The father of the girl is now suing the school district $30 million for not only how they handled the situation but for the damages his daughter endured surrounding the assault. There are many other accounts of this type of scenario in bathrooms and locker rooms literally all over the country, even in our own state. Upstate New York recently, there was a physical, this time not sexual, attack on a girl in a school by a boy in the girl's bathroom where he was again allowed to be because of his gender identification. And you've also seen it in prisons, too, sexual assaults by trans men allowed in women's jails. So what is happening in these scenarios and what this policy holds the door wide open for time and time again? Is a biologically, physically stronger person, a male with a mental illness called gender identity disorder or gender dysphoria, being allowed in a private and secluded space with no cameras and no witnesses, with a young woman who by their very nature are at a physical disadvantage to overcome him and therefore be at his mercy and whim? At the same time, and this aspect has nothing to even do with transgender students, is the fact that, I know not everyone, especially the males, might be able to relate to this, but when a predatory man or teenage boy has a sexual attraction to a female, this policy is like Christmas freaking morning to him. Anyone who has been pursued aggressively in this way knows exactly what I'm talking about. So how many times do we have to hear of this going south to realize that this isn't some made-up boogeyman brought to you by a pretend phobia? This is really happening. So when does a school board and administration stand up and say, "Enough? We protect our women in this community." It's cowardly. I have a 13-year-old daughter who is an athlete, who uses bathrooms and locker rooms in the middle school. So my concern as a mother, and I speak for many when I ask this question, is what are you going to do to prevent a Loudoun County from happening here? And my concern as a taxpayer is, can we even, as a district, afford a $30 million lawsuit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Middleton Jr., 32 Johnson Place. Before I start, Mr. Bartels, I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you for having always treated me in a kind and fair manner, and I always think of you fondly.
A few weeks ago, House Speaker Mike Johnson banned men from women's bathrooms at the Capitol. This is in response to Sarah, formerly Timothy McBride, winning the House election to become the first openly transgender member of Congress. She represents Delaware. Not surprisingly, trans activists occupied a women's bathroom at the Capitol in protest. South Carolina Representative Nancy Mace, who supported the measure, was assaulted by a pro-trans activist yesterday and now wears an arm brace temporarily. The Diagnostic and Statistical Manual, DSM, version 3 formally considered gender identity disorder as a mental disorder. As of 2013, the distress people in that group experienced was recognized, and in 2022, it was, from that point onward, considered a mental health condition to allow for healthcare such as hormone therapy, counseling, and gender-affirming surgeries. While I recognize there exists a contingent of people who have GID, as I will refer to it by using the acronym, I do not think inappropriate sexual material should be pushed on children who don't have GID, nor should they be forced to share a restroom with those who do. I feel this tantamount to indoctrination, a reprogramming, a blatant reprogramming of biological science to one based on feelings. There are many parents who feel as I do, but who are reticent to speak up for fear of being ostracized, losing social standing, or perhaps their job. I have no such fear and refuse to sacrifice my beliefs just to fit in. Men who feel like women are playing on girls' sports teams, being crowned beauty pageant winners, and we're being told it's the new normal, well, the majority doesn't think it's normal and will not comply. If I suspect that my child is being introduced to alternative lifestyles, pronouns, sexually-themed material, or girls who feel like boys in the boys' bathroom in order to indoctrinate him, I will pull him from the school and enroll him in a charter school, something that would cause the district to pick up the tab. Schools are supposed to protect children, all children. Rhetorical question: Would any ladies on the board be okay with using the same bathroom at the same time as Mr. Gavin? Or Mr. Gavin, would you be okay using the same bathroom as the ladies on the board at the same time? How about a locker room? How would your spouses feel about this? So why then are we subjecting children to this confusing and potentially dangerous situation?
Isaac Quo, 64 Hempstead Avenue. First of all, I'd just like to thank the board for, I know this is volunteer, and your giving of your time and energies and passion for the good of our school district. So I just want to start and say thank you for that. I'm a, our son is in the high school, and I've got four girls, starting in the middle school, all coming up behind him. I'm proud to be a public school kid. Elementary school, all the way through high school, university, grad school. My parents didn't have money to send me to private school. As an immigrant family, we came to this country with nothing. But my public schools were of such equality that I'm able to stand toe-to-toe, shoulder-to-shoulder with other folks on Wall Street who went to these prestigious schools so good that I don't even recognize the names of these schools. And that's the kind of school that we have here in Rockville Center, and I'm proud of that. I think we should all be extremely proud of that. And I desperately want for our public schools to succeed. I believe in the mission of public schools to be the force that drives equality across and opportunity regardless of socioeconomic status. That's the mission that you guys are here for, right? And yet, it breaks my heart that when I heard that this was the new reality of our schools, for the first time in my life, I thought that I would have to pull my kids out of the school district. I believe that there's perhaps many parents here who are considering and have thought about the same thing. And I just, I don't want that to happen. We talked about the budget and how it works, and every single kid that chooses to leave the district, that's less dollars for the rest of the kids, the kids who are, like me, who didn't have money to go to private schools. You know, hey, look, there's some kids that can afford to go to Chaminade and Sacred Heart and Kellenburg. And you know what? I don't fault anybody for that decision. But I would just implore the board to consider the will of the people here. You're elected to implement and enact the will of the people, and I hope that you're hearing that tonight. Ultimately, though, what my wife and I decided, what we came to is, not now, not without a fight, not without at least giving this a strong go. And I would implore folks in the audience tonight who are considering the same thing, not yet, not without a fight. Know that there are people in our community, know that there are people in our community who will not sit idly by while our children are being put at risk. And again, I would just implore the board to hear the will of the people here and to whatever you need in order to, for us to demonstrate that to you, that yes, perhaps a silent majority in the past, but I truly believe a majority here is what's being represented. I don't, my reading of the law is that this policy is not law. It is an incorrect interpretation of the law, and I think we need to revisit that. So again, for folks in the audience who feel this way, please come see me, come see any of the speakers who have come before, and let's rally together. Thank you.
Sarah Cooney, 91 Hempstead Avenue. Eighteen months ago, at the July Board of Education meeting, a parent asked whether a male identified- a male identifying as a female would be allowed in the female locker room. The superintendent replied as follows. Number one, we haven't had to face that issue. Second, if that situation were to arise, we'd have to speak to the people involved and talk with not only with a student that might be transgender, but also the other students. As each and every situation arises, we feel first of all that all our children should feel respected, heard, honored, and valued. That's number one. Second, we would have conversations with those involved. Despite this promise and this mantra of respected, heard, honored, and valued, nobody was consulted. A female is being allowed in the boys' bathroom, and neither parents nor staff nor the boys affected were told. In fact, high school boys who are uncomfortable have been intimidated into silence by an allegation that a boy was already disciplined for complaining and not respecting gender Until just now, this allegation had not been categorically denied. Students and parents have First Amendment rights to free speech on this issue, and this includes complaining about this invasion of privacy and risk to all students' safety. You're also telling us you have no policy in place to set ground rules despite the fact that you claim it's been the law since 2019 that trans students can go in whatever bathroom or locker room they choose. Are you going to wait for a student to strip naked in the locker room of the opposite sex before doing anything to manage the chaos of this radical trans activist agenda by Democrats? You have an undeniable duty to safeguard the privacy and welfare of all students. You also have a duty to implement a bathroom and locker room policy that informs and protects everyone. Please address the following either now or in writing. Please confirm where students should lodge their complaints. Is it the Dignity Act Coordinator or the Title IX Coordinator? Second, when can we expect to see a policy that sets ground rules, and will students and parents be informed of the rules? The policy should address, among other things, how the school controls who gets this preferential treatment to access opposite-sex bathrooms or locker rooms. Is proof required, or can anyone declare themselves gender fluid or non-binary to switch whenever they feel like it and abuse the entire process? What's the due process applicable when inevitably accusations of misconduct in bathrooms are made either by or against a trans student? Our children are being put in this dangerous position because trans activists aren't interested in compromise or reasonable accommodations. The single-stor gender-neutral bathrooms are rejected by them. Nothing short of the destruction of all single-sex bathrooms, locker rooms, and girls' sports is the goal. If you think trans activism is about kindness and inclusion, you believe propaganda. I urge everyone to put pressure on this board to stand for all students and not just the .1%. Please also remember that in the next 18 months, three seats on this board are up for election. Hold people accountable.
Mike Cosgrove, 118 Brower Avenue. I'm not here to talk about bathrooms. However, I'm here to talk about another instance where our children are not being protected within these walls. It's amazing that for a school where post after post on Parents Square champions amazing resources to help both students and parents navigate through everything that is thrown their way. In fact, there's an event this Monday that's going to help out for vaping and for social media. This same school has undermined that by the inclusion of The Handmaid's Tale, which is a cornerstone of the junior English curriculum and is being read right now. During back-to-school night, it was stated that this book was one that would be read, and it is a tough read. That simple statement raised an eternal red flag, which prompted me to read it first. To say I was appalled would be an understatement. There's absolutely no reason at all that this slop should be used in a high school English class. It is filled with lazy, uninspired themes such as America stinks, men stink, women are cattle, suicide is heroic, religion, especially Judeo-Christian values are useless. All of these themes and the book were thrown together 40 years ago by the author. They should not be propped up as profound, special, unique, or to compare 40 years ago to here and now. This story is fiction and one person's warped, perverted fantasy that, again, has no place in a high school classroom. Our children do not need a depressing book to put these themes in their heads. They are bombarded by them every day, every time they check their phones. One huge difference is that their lives are reality, and this book is garbage. The book offers no answers, no direction, and to try to pull something out of it for whatever purpose is useless, especially for educational purposes. Any other book could be used and should be used to fit the educational agenda. Quote, "It was the best of times, it was the worst of times," is one of the greatest lines in literature written by Charles Dickens. This single line could be pondered on, it could be discussed, and a student's reflection can be graded on. Instead, we have, "I untangle myself from her body, stand up, the juice of the commander runs down my legs." Or, "My red skirt is hitched up to my waist, though no higher; below it the commander is fucking. What he is fucking is the lower part of my body." These lines are some of the lowlights of Chapter 16. I have copies if anyone would like to read it. I would love somebody to explain to me how reading these lines make our children better. As they grow, we constantly ask our kids to think differently, challenge every day to be better, change things that are not working, and to be a voice for others with the ultimate goal of striving to make this world a better place. As the heads of the district, you have been put here to lead. I'm asking you to set an example, change course, and pull this book. Defend a child, not useless words on paper. I challenge all of you to find a better way. Thank you.
I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but clearly, you know, the parents and families here are very passionate about the issues that just about everybody is speaking about, and, you know, I hold that same passion, and I agree. And listen, the look on all your faces says it all. Like, you don't want to deal with this. There's a huge thorn in your side, and you don't want to deal with it. It's very, very simple, right? Just make separate bathrooms, make separate locker rooms. It's easy. It's equality. It's simple. Stand up for our children, stand up especially for our female children. There's two ways that this is going to go. Either, one, you do the right thing, or, two, you don't. And something huge is going to happen, whether it's a giant lawsuit or if you have, if you're going to have the father of a daughter in this district, and if anything happens to her, it's not going to be good, what happens in this town, and you know it. Parents are very passionate about this, and something huge will happen. So it's very, very simple. We're not asking you to do brain surgery. Just do the right thing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Medlin, 1124 Maple Avenue, South Hempstead. I'm a hemper. I don't even know where my mind is going. Not to sound like a broken record, I grew up here. I think some of you are used to my face now. I was at St. Agnes. My parents moved here, my parents grew up here. They strived to get me into this district to do the IB diploma. I graduated from South Side High School. I am struggling now, my husband and I, to stay in this town, to afford to live here, to give them what I had, and I question it every day. And I'm more involved than I, like many people in this room, full-time, working, three children, can't survive, can't function, and somehow I'm here. And I question why I am, and it's because I'm looking at this table, and I'm going to echo a lot of what was said. You guys are voted in here, we trust you. We thought we were struggling here for the right reasons, and what scares me is that we have to tell you this. There's like, I can't even think about the amount of education that you all have in this room. And like, you're all really smart, you all have great degrees, we all respect you, and that we have to stand here and tell you this and feel like we're annoying you over and over again. And then I have to tell my kids where I'm going tonight? And I just pulled up the mission on your really cool new website that I talk about and I like, and there's a lot of good information. But it says here, "That is our goal to empower each student to meet the challenges of tomorrow's emerging world. The district will provide a safe, nurturing environment in which individual and civic responsibility is fostered. Diversity is respected, and all students are enabled to realize their full potential." I think you should just cross that out and delete it, because my kids are not being provided a safe and nurturing environment, only the kids that are different than them. And I have to tell my kids that and feel that every day and question why I pay the taxes that I pay, and I can't pay for like toilet paper or pay for their uniforms, or why my daughter that's in soccer I have to worry about, that if she's going to be able to do this, and my son that's in a bathroom at the wrong time in the wrong place, and why I'm doing that to be in this community. I thought I knew why, and everything that I grew up in is completely different. And every day I wake up and I think, why do I have these two cold sores on my mouth today? And I wasn't going to come, and I was tired because work was stressful, Christmas is coming, who needs what tomorrow? And at 8 o'clock, I was like, you know what? My husband walked in the door, and I was like, I really think I should go. And I walked in an hour late, nobody's lunches packed, nothing's done tomorrow, and I keep doing this over and over. This started three years ago with COVID, and I look at Massapequa, I look at other districts, why don't I move there and pay their taxes? They don't have to be told this. Their boards do these things. I mean, like, I trusted you guys. I trust you guys with my kids' lives. I put my kids in daycare at three months old and trust these people. You guys spend more time with my children than I do. And I really, really trusted you, and I don't know who to trust anymore, because I thought it was here, and I stayed here because I trusted it, because I lived it. Some of you taught me. I just, I don't, like, again, I wasn't prepared, I'm just talking now, but I'm just, I keep wondering how I got here. And I'm looking at all of you, and you all look like you're just annoyed with us over and over again, and it's the same group of people. And this isn't who I wanted to be. I didn't want to be the annoying mom. That's like what I strive not to be. But I don't know how to tell my kids to live in the world and to send them where they're supposed to be safe. I'm probably over my time, so thank you and have a good evening.
Jeff Greenfield, citizen taxpayer. I've missed a few meetings due to family and business obligation, so I'm not 100% up on this recent debate. I came here tonight to salute Robert Bartels. Hard to imagine, 25 years you've been taking my calls, my questions. I have the utmost respect for you. I've been through a lot of assistant administrators for business affairs, but you were the best by far, the most honest, transparent, forthright, and I appreciated it as citizen taxpayer. Even when you told me, Jeff, you're on to something, you found out where I buried the money to settle the teacher's contract, please don't bring that up at the meeting. And I respected that, and I didn't bring that up. I'm sorry to see you leave. I hope you brief your successor thoroughly about me, and they take my calls and honest in the future, because that's the standard that I'm used to hear. Now, let's talk about the bathroom. 55 years ago, my first school board meeting in the administration building was, I was a 16-year-old student, and they were locking the bathroom as a solution to the drug problem in the school. So I objected. I came to a meeting, no TVs, no broadcasts, no microphones, smoking in the boardroom, and I stated my objection. And the president of the school board, Albert Wood, smoked in a cigar, blew smoke in my face, and told me, kid, go piss on a tree. I wasn't as well-versed as today, so I didn't respond. My father and mother brought me up politely. The next day, I, this is all going to be in my book, the next day, my book entitled Citizen Taxpayer. The next day, the superintendent of schools, Dr. Byers, a very staunch Protestant, called me into his office and told me I could use his bathroom in the White House whenever I wanted to. I told him I lived on Muirfield Road, I was going to go home, but I said, you missed my point. There's a drug problem. So I'm telling you, 55 years later, we're talking about bathrooms. I spoke to the superintendent in the neighboring district where I'm also citizen taxpayer. They don't have that problem there. Lynbrook, thank you. I don't understand why we have it here, but I hope you fix it, solve it, get state education law changed, or whatever you have to do. It shouldn't be a problem here. I'm very simplistic. My view on life today at my age, you are what your plumbing is. That's it. Thank you.
Shannon Lutz, 60 William Street. November 7th, coincidentally, the last time I spoke here, my kindergarten daughter came home from school and told me, quote, "A boy helped me turn off the water in the bathroom today." I asked, a custodian? No, mommy, a big boy, and the same boy saw me wiping the last time. I asked where? She said the bathroom near music. October 29th was her last class before this. My second grader chimed in with, "The gender-neutral bathroom." I say, what do you mean a boy saw you wiping? Side note, she wipes herself standing because she dries herself better that way, allowing full view to someone opening the door. I don't know how to lock the door, and he opened it and said, "You need to lock the door next time, and don't tell anyone. Don't tell anyone on me." And so she didn't. She didn't tell me for nine days until the day the same boy helped with the sink. She knew his name because she heard a teacher say it in the cafeteria, and there was a fourth-grade class directly across from music. Keep in mind, he was there with her on two separate occasions. Unsettling. I forced myself to believe this was innocent and nothing more happened, or I will never sleep again. I trust my daughter's words. What I do not understand is why my daughter was sent to use a bathroom alone, unsupervised, with the door she was not taught how to lock. There are two toilets in single rooms with a shared exterior sink space. It is the only bathroom in the area, and that is where she was sent. If said bathroom was going to be used, all young children should have been taught how to lock the doors. When I spoke to the principal, she said she's probably not the only kindergartner who does not know how to lock these bathrooms. I will send the TAs with the kindergartners for a few weeks. Upon a later meeting with the principal and Mr. Murphy, it is my belief that the TAs are accompanying the kindergartners to these bathrooms from now on, a safety measure that should have been in place. This is being done reactively instead of proactively and at the expense of my daughter. If this boy had been mentally disturbed, we would be having a different situation on our hands. For full disclosure, my daughter's story was corroborated by the boy, except for their versions of what point she was up to in her bathroom use, irrelevant to me because she specified, quote, "saw me wiping," and why they need to say "don't tell on me" if he didn't think he saw something he shouldn't have. He also didn't recall whether or not he said "don't tell." November 7th, the same day again, her teacher emailed to say she had been using the bathroom a lot. I responded that I noticed it at home the past few days as well and would follow up with the doctor. It got worse. A typical five-year-old can hold 210 milliliters of urine. She was only able to hold 16 before crying she was going to wet herself during an attempted sonogram. That day, per the bladder specialist and urologist, she was diagnosed with an overactive bladder, which she has never had before, going 30 to 50 times spitfuls a day. She was put on crushable medication, which caused her floaters and scared her, and then an extended-release pill, which was uncrushable and further traumatic, to get her to swallow because, well, she's five, but the only way it can be administered because of the floaters, which my five-year-old described as little white hairs and bugs in front of her eyes. Overactive bladder has some causes. One is constipation, she is not and was not, as well as stress and anxiety to an event. So I would like to thank Rockville Center School District for causing my daughter this trauma, both mentally and physically. Not to leave anything unsaid, I blame you for this. You did not take safety into account when you made these changes on bathrooms, and also why are kindergartners sent to bathrooms unsupervised with locks on doors they have not been taught how to lock? Forget about using opposite-sex bathrooms if this is what happens in a gender-neutral setting. November 13th, my daughter had a nightmare where she was in the bathroom at school and big boys took her and said they would return her but didn't. She woke up crying unconsolably and said, "You weren't there to save me, mommy. Why weren't you there?" On November 19th, my daughter started a new school. I know, Mr. Gavin, you're a busy man, and you need to delegate to get things done. I just wonder if you would have given my husband and I the respect of our requested meeting with you instead of Mr. Murphy, because as you stated, this was his purview, if I had explicitly written, "A fourth-grade boy saw my kindergarten daughter's vagina," instead of just, "A big boy saw her wiping," something of this magnitude and nothing from you after my meeting with Mr. Murphy. Something of this magnitude and nothing from you after my meeting with Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Bartels, I came tonight to, I know you don't like it, you don't want it, but you deserve the credit for the twenty-five years you gave the Rockville Center community. Your loyalty, your honesty, your transparency, your willing to spend any amount of time with every board member is amazing to me. You never turned anybody down. You pulled this district together during the COVID years. It was a very difficult time, and you understood the difficulty there, and you still, you stuck with us till we got through it. And just from me, I had the honor of working with you for twelve years, and it's just been, it was phenomenal to work with you. You made being a board member easy when it came to numbers and availability of things. On this issue, you know, my personal opinion is it shouldn't happen. You say it's the law, but I think it's terrible that you didn't have a conversation with the community before you enacted this. You didn't have a public meeting so you could hear all this before you made that decision. Many school districts on Long Island are using the single-use bathrooms to comply with what the law or the recommendation is, and I can't understand why Rockville Center isn't doing that. You have single-use bathrooms, gender-neutral bathrooms. By going into the gang bathrooms, what they call them, you take away the rights and the safety and the privacy, I'm going to say mostly women, but also the boys in the district. And I just think that's something you should consider stepping back and just going back to the single-use bathrooms. And I, you know, from my, say, I had boys, so I never would think, but if I had a girl, I think I'd tell the girl, always use the single-use bathroom. It's the way you can feel safer than anywhere else in the district. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year.
Christine Ferrazani, 131 Dartmouth Street. I just came to say thank you and good luck to Robert. You are a consummate gentleman, professional. You take your time with anyone who has a question, whether it be a board member, a community member. You're open, you're honest, and you've been a wonderful addition to this district for twenty-five years. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, so, a few things. Number one, I want to say that we're never annoyed during public comment. We're here to listen, and we hear you. Ms. Harvey, I'm going to ask you a few questions, please, at this time.
No problem.
Can you please, I just want to make it clear that this was not a policy that this board implemented, and it's not specific to Rockville Center. This board did not create a new policy in our manual addressing this issue. So I'm going to ask Ms. Harvey a couple of questions just to point out the difference between a board policy and what we have to follow as a school district, please.
So the school district has to follow New York State laws. It's not a policy when you're following New York State laws. There are certain things that would go in policy that may give more facts about how you're doing something, but following a New York State law would not be a Rockville Center policy.
And you advise other districts, obviously your firm, so this is not, the same advice would be given to other school districts, not just Rockville Center, correct?
Yep. My firm represents 195 school districts across New York State.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up?
If I may. I just have a question on that. Is it the case that this is the same policy in every other school district in the state?
I'm not familiar with the other districts' board policies. We can find that out. I'm talking about Rockville Center. I'm talking about our board, and I just don't want people to be misconstruing that this board adopted a new policy regarding this issue. That's all I'm trying to clarify.
Okay. So if it turns out that other school districts have a different policy, would that mean that you've adopted a different policy than those school districts?
We don't have a current policy regarding this specific issue. That's all I'm saying at this time.
Viewer of the comments and attorney's comment, could you pass a resolution tonight going to, hear me out before you say no? I know you're used to saying no to me, but hear me out, adopting a single-use approach? Would that be so terrible? And I also came up here, because I forgot to wish you Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year. But also, when I leave here tonight before I drive home, I need to use a bathroom. What bathroom am I supposed to use? A very, could I use the faculty bathroom that I always use next door? I don't want to get into trouble.
Thank you.
Could you think about a resolution that way?
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items M2 through P16?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to enter adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Wait, is that right, Mrs. Celebrity, or did I skip one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year. Next meeting is scheduled for January 9th, 7:00 PM, and that will be in the Commons.